District 13 Councilmember Eric Garcetti says the hail a taxi program is the most basic thing we can do in Los Angeles and will help to take cars off the road.
I do have my doubts of whether it can succeed without the use of bus zones, but what we've been doing very creatively and I appreciate from DOT's perspective is taking a lot of the parking meters that during the daytime are used as parking meters and then turning those into taxi zones at night, switching those. In future years, we've talked about maybe doing that with electronic signs, ways that are very clear to our drivers, whether it's a local that comes down to Hollywood Boulevard or whether it's a tourist. But clearly, we want people arriving safely and leaving Hollywood safely. And reducing traffic in Hollywood is a huge priority of mine. Ninety-five percent of our traffic is through traffic, to be clear. It's not that the resurgence of Hollywood is causing traffic in the area as much as the growth of the city by and large. But we do have to find a way that people can conveniently, especially as we see nightlife come back, and unfortunately, the metro doesn't run late at night, and that's another priority of ours, is to try to get the metro to run later, so the people who will take the subway into Hollywood will also have the faith that they can get on a subway to leave. But right now, taxi is one of the best ways either to get from one point to another at night or to go home from Hollywood. And so I want to thank the Business Improvement District, the Chamber of Commerce, all the people who are engaged and involved in this. But it's the most basic thing we can do in a city, which is to hail a cab safely, make sure that it's safe for that cab driver, that it's profitable for the cab companies and the cab drivers, but that works for the people. We have two-thirds of our car trips in Los Angeles are not our trips to and from work. They're everything else that we do. And so when people try to force people onto transit or into taxi cabs or carpooling to and from work, we know that that is mostly impossible for many people. But it's the other two-thirds of trips that we take, to meet a friend for a drink, to meet a friend for a cup of coffee, to go out to a movie, to see a play, to be able to walk to a grocery store and pick up groceries and get home, or take a short cab ride. That is what we want to do, taking cars off the road. Because if we can each do that with even two or three trips a week, I mean, look what the high price of gasoline has done. It gets the roads flowing again to be able to take a couple trips off of the road.
Please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And joining us now is the Assistant General Manager of the Department of Transportation, Amir Sadadi. Mr. Sadadi, welcome to Council Week in Review.
Thank you, Jack. Great to be here.
It's taken a long time to get the hail a taxi program actually passed by council. When does it actually take effect?
Well, we anticipate the mayor signing the program in the next few days, and there's a planned announcement presentation that's going to be on July 31st that will then kick off the initial pilot program.
Very good. Los Angeles, of course, without a doubt, a world-class city, but cities like New York, Chicago, London, people have been able to hail taxis there for years. Why does Los Angeles seem to be a little bit behind the curve on this issue?
It's a great question, Jack, and I think some of it has to do with our love and infatuation for the automobile, which has caused us not to have the same culture of hailing a cab in as other cities that you just mentioned. I think also having Los Angeles being so large and spread out, that's also another reason where the taxi industry has relied on phone order services throughout the many neighborhoods that we serve.
Where will this pilot program actually take place? And how long will it run, by the way, as a pilot program before you can determine its success?
Yes, we're beginning a six-month pilot project, and mainly it will be focused in downtown and Hollywood. We've seen a great revitalization of downtown and Hollywood, where business, residential, entertainment venues are all coming together, and that has an urban village feel, an urban environment where flagging taxi cabs, we feel, will be very successful.
Assuming that it is successful, and I suspect you're probably absolutely right about that, how might the expansion of the program take place? What other communities might be next, for example?
Many of the communities that would have attractions generating large pedestrian activities, you know, Venice Beach, Westwood Village, the Beverly Center, La Cienega, Ventura, those are all some of the areas that come to mind, but this would be able to really go throughout the city, the entire city.
You've certainly named what many of us think of as transportation corridors, especially dense corridors within the city.
Yes, and that's part of the whole program, Jack, is to provide an alternative method to people driving their vehicles into these locations. So it's part of the whole mass transit concept of us being able to use mass transit, Metro Rail, Light Rail, subway.
This program is not exclusively through the Department of Transportation, though. What other agencies and departments are involved in the implementation of this hail a cab program?
Our office, the Department of Transportation, the council offices have worked very closely with the Los Angeles Police Department, who's on board with this program. We've been working with Chief Bratton's staff on this program, and they would be assisting us with this program. In addition, we've been working with the Central City Association, the Business Improvement Districts in downtown and Hollywood, and they also are going to be assisting us in providing the word out to the public and getting the necessary people out onto the streets.
As we understand it, the bus zones were a key issue as to where the taxi should or should not be able to stop and pick up passengers. There's been a lot of negotiation, I understand, about that. What are the guidelines for bus zones? In fact, if I need a cab in Hollywood, can I hail one from just anywhere?
Yes, and that was the topic that we discussed in council. In fact, as a result of the council action, all of the bus stops will now be not be included as part of this pilot program, meaning taxi cabs will not be able to load and unload in bus stop zones. And that's mainly due to the safety reasons, as I've indicated. As far as in Hollywood, we've also, in addition to hailing a cab, we've provided additional stands, taxi stands in Hollywood. So you should be able to get a taxi anywhere in Hollywood, Jack.
What happens if, say, I'm in Venice, and maybe I want to go to Hollywood or downtown or whatever, can I hail a cab just on the street? And what would happen to a driver if one did stop and pick me up?
Yeah, and that's the unfortunate perception out there, that people thinking that it was illegal to hail a cab. It's perfectly legal to hail cabs anywhere in Los Angeles. What this pilot program is initiating is a more focused enhancements of the relaxation of the enforcement rules, so that taxis can more easily pull over to the curb, load and unload passengers. The concept is very simple, Jack. It's really is meant that taxis should be able to do this in a safe manner, where they won't create an unsafe situation for the public or for the traffic.
Parking enforcement officers, obviously, are going to be well-versed on where taxis may and may not stop. What about the LAPD? How's information about the hail a taxi program being distributed?
We've been working very closely with LAPD, so all of the protocols and information that we're providing to our traffic officers will be shared with the police department, and both personnel from DOT and LAPD will have access to those protocols.
We've been talking about legitimate taxis, of course, so far. What about the bandit cabs, which have been such a problem in Los Angeles?
Yes, and that's a great topic, that the city and the department have continuously been working on reducing the number of bandits throughout Los Angeles. In fact, there's been a bandit enforcement program that was established in late fall of 2006 by adding 20 cents to each taxi cab fare, as well as assessing each driver $1 per day. Those funds create about $800,000 annually, which then LAPD's officers, as well as DOT's six traffic investigators who work full-time on the fight against the bandit taxis, will go out there and try to arrest those violators. And Jack, we've had a good success since the program's begun. We've had a 400% increase in the number of arrests since the program's begun. It's roughly about 1,200 arrests per year. And with January 2009, with some recent legislation that was passed in Sacramento, we will be able to impound the vehicles for 30 days, which I believe is a strong deterrent for the bandits not to be doing business in Los Angeles.
Let's suppose I take a cab ride from, say, Santa Clarita or Santa Monica to downtown Los Angeles. That cab driver is going to be there in the area where hail a taxi is the law of the land for homegrown cab drivers. Can they pick up somebody who just hails them on the street?
No, and that's, I think, where we come in with the Bandit Taxi Program, as well as an education program that we are going to be doing a taxi fact book. We asked the public, and we were going to be educating them, to really look for the City of Los Angeles seal on our taxis, on the permitted taxis, and look for the words "City of Los Angeles" in the permits, driver permits inside the vehicles. So those other cities that are dropping off in our city are not allowed to pick up passengers.
So those cab drivers would have to go back to their home city empty?
That is true, yes.
Wow. It's been a very busy week for the Department of Transportation in general. Bring our viewers up to date, for example, on the parking meter rate increases.
Yes, it has been a very busy week, and the city council on Tuesday passed an ordinance where approximately 40,000 meters citywide will have a rate increase. Majority of the meters, about 87% or 34,000, will be at a dollar minimum, and the other meters will be, rates will be doubled, roughly going from anywhere from $2 to $4.
We've also heard talk in council over the past several weeks about the possibility of extending the hours, where you have to feed the meter, as it were. What's the situation there?
Yes, as part of a very comprehensive parking program, Jack, we're also extending the meters, the hours of the meter operation citywide till about 8:00 PM. That's normally Monday through Saturday. In some areas where you have the businesses, adjacent businesses going later into the evenings and night times, those entertainment shopping districts, we're extending those hours till midnight on Friday and Saturday, and on Sundays, it will be 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. It's real important to note that Los Angeles has not had a rate increase for about 20 years, and in that 20 years, the price of the Consumer Price Index, the inflation, has gone up over 90%. So that's one of the main reasons. We're trying to keep the demand, has not kept up with pace with inflation, as well as the fact that a lot of people drive and cruise around trying to find that low-priced, underpriced, on-street parking, which creates a huge amount of unnecessary traffic congestion and air pollution.
And to be clear, I assume that some of the transportation corridors that you mentioned earlier, Wilshire, Ventura Boulevard, for example, they still will have no parking at all, curbside during commute hours, I assume?
Yes, this program will not affect any of the mayor's tiger team initiatives and the peak hour zone, so all of those programs will still be in place. These are the areas where normally you had metered hours from 8:00 to 6:00, will now be 8:00 to 8:00.
Got it. Okay, glad you cleared that up. What about the increase in boot fees that we heard about?
Yes, also as part of the council's action on Tuesday, the boot release fees, which is when a vehicle has a boot, and in order to release that, the fee has gone up from $125 to $150. Now, a boot is placed on a vehicle where the owner of that vehicle has had, has five unpaid citations or more, and it's really a deterrent for those individuals to be paying for those citations. If the fee is not paid within 24 hours, then the vehicle is impounded, towed and impounded, and all fees have to be paid, including the parking citation, before the vehicle is released.
Years ago, we used to call that the Denver Boot. Did it actually begin in Denver? Is that when we got the idea?
Yes.
Okay. I always assumed that, never had a chance to ask before. Finally, you mentioned the Taxi Fact Book a few minutes ago. What might be in that book when it comes out? And if our viewers have questions about the hail a taxi program, or any other thing that we've been talking about, what should they do?
Great question. We're working on that fact book, and that fact book will contain information on the city's taxi program. Will have a lot of key information, key contact numbers, how to spot a bandit taxi, and, you know, a lot of safety measures that will be put into the fact book. And we're working to get that out in the next 30 to 60 days. As far as information, the department's website has a lot of information, which is www.la dot la city dot org. There's a lot of information on there regarding the taxi industry, our taxi commission, the rules, and that's a forum where the public can give us feedback, they can give us comments, they can put in their complaints, and we'll definitely respond back to them. In addition to the 311, we also have a taxi hotline number, which I, if I may, give that to you, and that would be 800-501-0999. So those are some other measures for us, for people to be able to get some more additional information on the city's taxi program, as well as the hail a cab program.
That all sounds terrific. Amir Sadadi, Department of Transportation, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you so much. Pleasure to be here.
And again, your Los Angeles City Council unanimously approved the hail a taxi pilot program to help make Los Angeles more cab-friendly. You can listen to city council meetings, as well as committee and commission meetings on the telephone, by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 AM. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 AM. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 AM and 6:30 PM, on Sundays at 9:30 AM. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending July 18th, 2008. On behalf of Ted Lynn and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Councilmembers Cardenas, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zine, and Alacon. It is Wednesday, July 23, 2008. City Council meets Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10:00. You can access our meetings either by attending or Channel 35, as well as on the web, www.lacity.org, as well as calling and being on City Phone and being able to listen to our council meetings, which is 213-621-CITY. We have a quorum. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alacon, Cardenas, Gurilhan, Weiser, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Yes, Mr. Parks moves. Mr. Cardenas seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
Madam President, on the regular agenda, items 1 through 5 are items noticed for public hearing. There are street lighting district ordinances, and I believe there is a card on item number 5.
There is an item on item number 5. We will call that special. Any other specials, colleagues, 1 through 5? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the remaining items, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Next item?
Next items are also public hearing items, items 6 through 9. They are protests on street vacations, and if there are no protests, the recommendation for council action would be to instruct the city engineer to proceed.
Seeing no one calling those specials, special, we will, that instruction will be the case. We need to vote on those today. Yes, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Those items will be instructing the city attorney. Next items?
Next item is item number 10, also a public hearing item. It's a finding of public convenience or necessity, and Mr. Zine has a motion on that.
Mr. Zine, you ready to go on that?
Thank you, Madam President. I have an item on that. Hereby move that the council, in this matter, Council File 081058, deny the application of a finding of public convenience or necessity to sell beer/wine off-sale consumption at 18056 Sadecoy Street, Reseda, California, based on the above findings. A find that the public convenience or necessity will not be served by the sale of beer and wine for off-sale consumption at a Valley Mobile Gas Station and Mini-Mart located at 18056 Sadecoy Street, Reseda, California. And as much as there is an undue concentration of alcohol beverage sale license in the census tract, which proposed site is located in the subject is located in a high-crime reporting district, so we currently deny that application. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll be the order before us. Seeing no other council members on the queue, Madam Clerk, please open that, open the roll on that item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Madam President, on item number 11, the applicant consents to a continuance to Friday, and that would be July 25.
That will be continued until July 25.
Next items are items to which public hearings have been held, items 12 through 21. Item number 12 is a commissioner. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
We will hold item 12 on the desk.
And item number 13, a request to continue that ballot tabulation to Tuesday, which would be July 29.
That will be continued to the 29th. Any other specials? Mr. Labonge, should I see you? No? Okay. Seeing no other specials, Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
Excuse me, Madam President. I believe on item number 19, there's an amending motion that's in the process, and I don't believe it's been distributed as yet.
We will hold that on the desk. Next items?
That would be 14 through 21, with the exception of 19.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. We'll send item number 24 forthwith. 16 forthwith. Thank you. Next items, Madam Clerk?
Next items are items to which public hearings have not been held, items 22 through 33. 10 votes are required for consideration.
I know we're, Mr. Parks and I are calling item 28 special. Mr.?
27 special for Ms. Han.
Okay, thank you.
32 special for the Library Department and the great port of L.A. and me.
Okay. Great. We do have cards on items 22, 24, 27, 28, 30, 31, and 33. Any other specials, colleagues? Any other specials? If not, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, for clarification, there are cards on 22, 24?
27, 28, 30, 31, and 33. I think a few of those were added after. You saw the initial list. Yeah. So, Madam Clerk, we'll open the roll on the remaining items, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
Next items, Madam President, are the closed session items, 34, 35, and 36. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, we will hold those on the desk.
And there is a special meeting. Do you wish to recess the regular meeting and call the special meeting to order?
Please.
Alacon, Cardenas, Gurilhan, Weiser, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zine, Garcetti, 13 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. First item?
This item is a HCD report that has been submitted and distributed to the council.
Okay. Anyone wish to call that special? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Thank you. If asked of that to go forthwith, please.
And that concludes the special meeting.
Thank you very much. We also had a motion on yesterday's agenda, item number 43. If we could move to reconsider that item, there's a substitute motion that has been distributed.
And Madam President, just for the record, the council file number on that is 070011-sub28.
Thank you very much. We're reconsidering that item, and the amendment will be before us. First, we'll open on reconsideration, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Thank you. That item is now before us with the amendment that has been distributed. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on that item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge has a quick introduction for the gentlemen, I think, who are starting to leave.
Great visitors from China here. Managers, please give them a big welcome. Have a good stay and learn all about Los Angeles. Thank you.
All right.
And, Madam President, what is appropriate for a brief, item 32, if I could take it out of order? We do have the Port Director and the City Librarian here. 32 out of order when you get a shot.
Okay. We do have a commissioner. I think we'll go with our commissioner. This is item number 12. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Victor H. Cuevas. He is being appointed by the mayor to the Board of Building and Safety Commission. Mr. Cuevas, would you just like to share a little bit about yourself, your background, and what you hope to contribute to this board?
Good morning. I am a lifelong resident of the City of L.A. I grew up in the East Valley, CD7, lifelong. I worked in public policy for several years before coming out of, after coming out of UCLA undergraduate. Recently, I went to graduate school, did urban planning, and have a little bit of project management experience.
Great. I wanted to first thank you for your service, and colleagues, you've shared with me one of his productions as a master's student. It's real clear to me, he's very familiar with the city, is able to articulate many of the issues that are affecting us, our environment, the built-out environment, looking at issues of open space. And so, his ability to serve on this board will, I believe, help us. As you know, this is an international city, a city of many different cultures and languages, so it's good to have individuals who are familiar with the range of diversity that we have here in the city. I also want to thank one of his professors, and her name again?
Juliana Delgado.
She's with Cal Poly as well. Please stand. She's a guest of us. Give her a round of applause. She's teaching many of our students in the master's program at Cal Poly, doing a lot of great work for us. So, again, any questions from my colleagues, you're welcome, but I'd like to highly recommend Mr. Cuevas to the Board of Commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your willingness to serve on this, and welcome to the City of Los Angeles on this item, and your appointment to our Building and Safety Commission. With that, I think, Madam Clerk, we're ready to vote. Open the roll on this appointment, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Congratulations. Look forward to working with you. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Yes, we will do that at this time. Mr. Arnold Sachs, followed by Zuma Dog, who's out in the San Fernando Valley today, Michael Carrion, Matt Dowd, and Olga Hall. Mr. Sachs.
Good morning, City Council. Arnold Sachs, thank you very much. Unfortunately, I couldn't be here yesterday because I was at the County Board of Supervisors, but I will pretty much reiterate what I spoke about at the County Board of Supervisors, my public comment there yesterday. On your agenda yesterday, you had a motion from council members Parks and Perry regarding The New Yorker magazine and the affront to the public, and that it should be removed from newsstands. And I expressed displeasure about that last week, and I again expressed my displeasure about removing articles for the public, from the public's right to view. I was wondering that if council members had written to the editors expressing their displeasure, or the local newspaper expressing their displeasure. Saying that, there was an, there was an event this past weekend that I brought to the attention of the County Board of Supervisors, and I bring to the attention here. There was a parade last weekend in Lebanon for a returning terrorist who had been freed and in a prisoner exchange. And this parade honored a person who committed a crime against some citizens in Israel. And what his crime was, was murdering a father and bashing a four-year-old's head against a rock, and then smashing it with a bar, with a barrel of a rifle. And this parade was held to honor this person. And I would ask the city council to step up and say they deplore the actions of the parade, and they deplore the actions of honoring this person. Killing children is not an action to be lauded, and there's to be somebody who steps up and lets some people know about it. Unless, of course, you want to express your opinion and you think you did the right thing. Again, thank you for your time, your attention, and your answers.
Thank you very much. We'll go out to the San Fernando Valley. Mr. Zuma Dog?
Yes, thank you. It's a heavy medication alert day, Prop 215. George Bush said Wall Street is drunk. We, Wall Street got drunk, and now we're dealing with the hangover. Zuma Dog got overly medicated, now we're dealing with that. It's called public comment. Speaking of George Bush and his comments, what he was saying was that Wall Street went crazy, and now we're left with it. Same thing with Mayor Antonio of Iragosa. The city had a record revenue come in. They took in record revenues last year, but we, Mayor Antonio went on an M.C. Hammer-style spending spree, and so now it's all new fees, raising fees, and they're putting taxes on the ballot, new taxes, state and city for lots of things. And I say, Zuma Dog says, it's time for the people to say no to all new taxes. Because first of all, it's the city's spending and wastefulness. If they would trim that down, then they wouldn't have to come and run to you to pick up the tab for Mayor Antonio's M.C. Hammer-style shopping habits. And the other thing is, the money doesn't go to what they say. They always wrap it up in something warm and fuzzy, for the kids, youth development, homeless, elderly, or whatever they're saying, property taxes to help make the streets safe. Well, as you know, they said we were going to get 1,000 new cops with the trash collection fees, then they only gave us 300 cops and said the rest went for something else. Prop 1C, for emergency infrastructure, emergency shelter and housing, it went for something else. Prop S, phone tax. The mayor said we're going to have to fire hundreds of people citywide. He didn't fire anybody, and he gave everybody raises. So, send a message. You're not bamboozled. You listened to Zuma Dog. Tell them to take their ballot measures and stick them up the year-year, and go to zumatimes.com. And I hope Jack Weiss is in his seat, and I hope he's not in his office soliciting campaign contributions illegally.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Michael Carrion.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion, and I agree with Mr. Zuma Dog. We're wasting, we're raising prices on meters, but yet, this city council has yet to enforce the meter regulations against your own employees. You can go right outside here, right across the street, there's a big sign that says, "No E-plates." There's five there this morning. It says, "Media parking only," and you people refuse to enforce it. Yet, you're going to raise the price for parking on everybody else, for parking citations. It is not getting the parking issue done. It's called revenue, 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 just like in the old days. You come to tax the poor and to take care of your own. Your city employees will not get cited because they're driving a city vehicle. Well, they signed the city vehicle out there, responsible for it. Give them the ticket and let them explain it. No city vehicle is exempt from parking in the red, but they're all parked in the red. And parking enforcement refuses to enforce that law, because no one on this horseshoe calls them and demands it to be enforced. I think somebody, every one of you should call the enforcement officers in your district and demand that it gets enforced equally across the board. I have no problem with you raising the price of the parking tickets if you enforce it equally. I have no problem with you raising the price of the trash if you give us quality service. But when you tax the poor so you guys can cover your own behinds, I don't think that's fair. You allow police to park anywhere to go out and have a hamburger, park in the red to go out and eat lunch. You have your own employees doing the same thing because they have E-plates. E-plate is exempt from registration in meters, not exempt from common sense and the law. Enforce it equally, please.
Thank you. Matt Dowd, followed by Olga Hall.
Hey, thank you, yeah, Matt Dowd. Just like to say hello to Channel 35, too, my weekly visit to City Hall, so I want to say hi to all the youngsters at chambers today, because I'm glad they're here, because I want to tell you what happened to me. I got arrested because of Hannah Montana. At Venice Beach, they've got this dumb law, the city attorney of Los Angeles right here, they've got this law, you're not allowed anything over four feet high on the beach if you're doing your public activity. So, I had a Hannah Montana cutout, a life, life-size cardboard for my show, I've got to perform a show, and the police came down and said, "Take Hannah Montana down, it's too tall. It's over four feet." I said, "No," so they wrote me a ticket for it. And then I said a bad word to LAPD, and they arrested me and put me in handcuffs and took me to jail. Anyway, I went to court on Monday for that, and it was a felony arrest when they dragged me away, and they didn't even file charges or prosecute. Off of felony at first. So, they're losing a lot of credibility. The arrests don't count. I've had numerous, and they never go to court against me, never. So, why aren't you taking care of these enforceable things that the people are telling you about and leaving us alone? So, you've got this four-foot law, and they've got the police on tape now. I got the sergeant on tape saying that the guy with the six-foot ladder, that he stands on top of juggling knives, that's okay. Oh, that's okay, six-foot ladder, that's okay. My five-foot prop, oh, it's Hannah Montana, y'all, it's Hannah Montana. That's illegal. Write me a ticket. Cut her legs off. Bring her down to four feet. And, and they go, oh, no, they, I've got it on tape. He goes, "Oh, I don't have a problem with the ladder or the microphone." It's, it's, you know, let's keep everyone down to four feet. But no, he's like, "No, Hannah Montana's the problem, y'all. Hannah Montana. Stop arresting me for Hannah Montana."
Thank you very much. Olga Hall, excuse me.
Good morning, council members. Last week, I asked Councilman Labonge if he had a secret meeting where he opposed the historic monument status for Griffith Park. I think he denied it was a secret meeting. I think he denied it was a secret meeting, although it has been posted all over that it was secret, carried by someone in his office. He still is responsible for whatever goes in his office. Today, I want to ask Councilman LaBong, is he opposing the historic monument status for Griffith Park? In the Daily News, it was reported that he asked the Department of Parks to study how the Griffith Park monument would affect city water, sewer, and power systems. Is this a delay tactic so Autry National Center can get their permit for an expansion? Should you not be preoccupied at the traffic, pollution, and other problems this expansion will cause? Councilman LaBong said, "I'm a preservationist. If you are a preservationist, how come you are not supporting the preservation of the First Museum of Los Angeles, the Southwest Museum? The Autry wants to convert it into a cultural center. Where is the museum?" Nothing will be built that is not accepted by the community. May I remind you that in 1986, the Board of Refered Powers, composed by five council members, voted against the community wishes? Hundred fourteen written responses were received. Hundred and twelve were against the construction of the Autry National Center in Griffith Park. Only two were in favor. There must be accountability to all of you for your actions. This is not personal. May I say it again, it's not personal. It's the truth.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hall.
Madam President, can I remind the speakers that they need to direct their comments to the council as a whole, not to the individual council members?
And Mr. City Attorney, I did introduce myself again to Ms. Hall and ask if she'd want to discuss this at all, and she just said she'd just like to make it public over the microphone. So an opportunity to try to resolve some of her concerns is declined by her. She would just like to speak on what her thoughts are. So, thank you. I just wanted to let you know, trying to do the best.
You've made a good record for that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weisar.
And thank you for this opportunity. I just want to take a little time here to introduce some special guests in council chambers today. I'd like to introduce Patricia De Luna and the Urban Embrace Day Camp from Ball Heights. Welcome to City Hall. Can you stand up so we can wave hi to you? And you can watch this later on in Channel 35. Thank you for coming out to learn about city governance and welcome. Not too far from Ball Heights, a quick drive, but certainly you're always welcome here to see how the city functions, and hopefully some of you decide to get involved later on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar. Mr. LaBong, you asked that item number 32 go out of order? Item 32.
If I may, this scheduled item here, number 32. Joining us right here is Geraldine Nats, our port director, as well as Chris Moreta, our library, and Bob Henry just rolling up right here on behalf of Janice Hahn, who is at a meeting in her district. And Mr. Rosendahl is joining us, and he says, "You know, the port celebrates its centennial." And they have these tremendous books right here. And what the port is going to do is put a book in every public library, 70 in the city, right now. Let me introduce Geraldine Nats for a report on this. Break, 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 break.
Thank you. I really have to credit the councilmen for this idea when his staff were taking a port tour about donating the book. We'd like to see others donate books to the library. And so this is a special book to us, but it also has some unique photos that have never really been widely publicized about the port. So we're very happy to make this donation to the library.
Geraldine, thank you, and Chris Moreta, our acting city librarian. Is this your first appearance before council?
No.
No.
On behalf of the Los Angeles Public Library, we'd like to thank the Harvard Department for this generosity. We will add this book to our collection of 6 million volumes available at the Central Library in the 71 branches. So thank you very much.
Six million and one, says Dr. Nats. Bill Rosendahl.
Yeah, yeah. First, I want to thank Geraldine Nash for her leadership on all of the environmental issues we're doing there. You're doing a fabulous job. We're very proud of you. We are going to become the greenest city in the nation with your leadership and the mayor's leadership. But this book is another one. I see an elephant here. I think some of my elephant friends, the ruby friends and billys, want to take a double look at it. But this is a great book, folks. This is a real history book, and thank you for giving it to the city and to the libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're also proud of everything that the port has done and tried to do. Here's the library card. Now all you do, come up here, Bob. Take your library card, you can check out this great book. Thanks to the Port of Los Angeles, and it's interesting history. And I love elephants more than Bill Rosendahl. All right. Have we all elephant lovers? On behalf of Janice Hahn, who's in the district, we accept this presentation. Thank you very much, Courtney.
We do have other speakers on the queue. Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Madam President. Geraldine, Doctor, good morning. There's a young man in my district. His name is Chandler Miller. Dad, Michael Miller, mom Jennifer Miller, and he owns an insurance company in the valley. And his son was telling me about some TV show that airs on cable about the port. I'd never heard it, I'd never seen it. He is so enthralled with that, and I want to bring him down to the port to visit it. All he talks about is the Port of Los Angeles and all the wonderful activities of the Port of Los Angeles. I had no idea there was a program that features our wonderful port that you run so well. And I know that we've done some travel on behalf of the city and the relationship we have with other parts of the world with the ports. But I was so impressed with this young man who's in school, elementary school, to talk and so wildly and so excited about the Port of Los Angeles. And whatever show you've got, I'd say you've captivated this young man, this Chandler Miller. He is totally captivated by the Port of Los Angeles. And I promised him that I'm going to bring him down to the port and meet you and the crew down there. He's absolutely wildly impressed about the port.
We'll do a tour for his whole class. I mean, bring him down, we'd love to do that. And I assumed everybody was watching America's Port on National Geographic Channel Monday nights. Now, the show has gotten a great following from around the country, but we didn't get an Emmy nomination for Best Nonfiction Series. I was up last week, 5:30 in the morning, listening as they made those announcements. But we're in reruns now, but it's a great show.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for the donation. I bought one for Ms. Hahn during the holiday season as it came out. So I missed the boat, so to speak. So thank you very much for that donation. Anything else, Mr. LaBong?
No, just want to have a Ms. Hahn and everyone at the port, the library, we thank you, we support. Visit your public library and check this book out.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 32, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Twelve ayes. That item's been approved. I understand on item 22, Mr. LaBong, that both of the speakers do not need to speak, Mr. Robertson and Mr. McDonald. So that item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 22, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item, Madam President, is item number five, and that was called Special Four Cards.
Yes, Mr. Sacks.
Thank you very much, Arnold Sacks. I just wanted to focus on the part of this amendment or this motion relative to the improvement and maintenance part of the section. Because I'd like to know if it's possible to find out what the lighting district is for the downtown area regarding Hill and First Street. Because when I was at the County Board of Supervisors meeting yesterday, they had an item regarding weed abatement and cleaning up areas. So I asked about cleaning up the big pit that's located at the intersection, the corner of First and Hill Street. And since this is a maintenance and improvement item on your agenda, I was wondering if you could look into having the lighting district that's located downtown, have some, take some action to have something done about the big pit.
He does not appear to be talking about item number five, Madam President.
Yes, this is regarding the improvement and maintenance of Helen Avenue and Wick Street lighting district.
If you, excuse me, but Mr. City Council Attorney and Madam President, I mentioned I was focusing on the part improvement and maintenance, and I'm asking for the lighting district that's located downtown to enforce an improvement and maintenance for the area bound by Hill and First Street, where there's a huge pit that's been located for like six months. It's an eyesore to the public, and something should be done. Thank you again for your time, your attention, and your answers.
Thank you. That item is now before us. On item number five, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number five, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Are we ready yet on number 19, or should we still hold that on the desk?
Yes, Madam President, the amending motion has been distributed.
Item 19 is now before us. And wish to ask any questions on that item? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number 19, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item's item 24, and that was called Special Four Cards.
Yes, Mr. Matt Dowd on item 24. Mr. Matt Dowd.
Actually, I'm going to wave this one. Thank you. I've got more important track maps.
Thank you. Okay, that does not want to speak on that item. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 24, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. We're going to hold on the desk item 27 until Ms. Hahn arrives. And Mr. Parks on item number 28. Mr. Parks? Okay, we'll hold item 28 on the desk until Mr. Parks returns in the room. Item number, I think it would be 30. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam President, that was four cards.
Yes. Mr. Sacks on item number 30. It'll be followed by Mr. Zuma Dogg in the San Fernando Valley, and then Mr. Dowd.
Yes, good morning again, Arnold Sacks. Relating again to special events where fees are waived or fees are discussed. Last week in a meeting, the President Pro Tem chastised a couple of the speakers for not being on point and the fact that there was city staff available in city council chambers, and they were waiting for cards that had been submitted that the speakers were not going to answer to or talk about. So I would kindly remind the President Pro Tem that...
He does not appear to be speaking about this special event matter.
Excuse me. Again, Mr. City Council Attorney, special events regard fees that have been waived. The fact that we were chastised for wasting city council time and money, those are fees. So I'm addressing the fee portion of the waiver part in the special events. So I would like to continue that on Fridays, when the city council has their presentation day, there is a multitude of city employees waiting around, much longer than the one or two minutes that the speakers that come up to the podium to address the city council on business or concerns that would be wasted. So it would behoove the city council chambers to follow their own rules and recommendations that wasting city council time is wasting city council employee money. So please, in the future, limit yourselves on Friday. Maybe you can cut it down to a quick hour.
The speaker continues to stay away from this special event issue. He should be admonished and warned that he's violating rules of the quorum because of his continued discussion of irrelevancies on the agenda items.
I'm sorry. I was addressing the fees again. The City Council Attorney should know that addressing the fees, when the city council has special events...
Thank you, thank you very much. But we have, he's indicated to you that you needed to stay on topic. We'll go out to the San Fernando Valley. Mr. Zuma Dogg.
Yes, we're talking about special event fee waivers, and I'd like to, I found something out. They call them waivers. And so you think, gee, it's just waived and nobody pays anything. Well, these are events that police, traffic, maintenance, and other services have to be provided. But the money comes out of the general fund. The money for these special event fees, I found out, is paid for out of the general fund. And I hate to tell you, you're coming to the taxpayers to ask them for more money on the ballot, and you're raising fees and taxes to pay for nonprofit organizations like these. And I'm also told by an attorney that a lawsuit needs to be filed in Superior Court because city council is in violation of the law with their diversions of monies for these special event fees. You're abusing your power. We will see you in court. Say no to all of these. You're in violation of the law.
Next speaker is Mr. Matt Dowd.
All right, this is a new one, the Van Nuys Downtown Tag Team on the special events, the Kick Jack Weiss While He's Down item, this one, because he was the one who brought out...
Again, she would ask that you, we've given you warnings to just address the council as a whole. Mr. City Attorney?
Well, I want to thank, yeah, I want to thank...
Okay, can hold your time. Mr. City Attorney would like to make a comment.
For the record, public criticism of the policies, procedures, programs, or service of the agency or of the acts or omissions of city council are allowed. However, discussion of personalities of city officials or employees is irrelevant to these proceedings.
Please go ahead.
Okay, so what does all that mean to the layman watching on Channel 35, Mr. City Attorney? I mean, Jack Weiss is running for city attorney.
He's not speaking about this agenda item.
You're to speak on the agenda item before us, which is the special events.
I'm trying to get a clarification of the ruling that he's making on my public comment here. Jack Weiss came out with a memo in 2001 about these fee waivers, and I want to get to that because he's meant to be running for city attorney. So I hear, and, you know, this is, I was going to thank him for bringing out that memo, but the city attorney wants to shut me down. I said it's the Kick Jack Weiss While He's Down item.
He continues...
Because that's what people are doing. But this is actually a good thing because we get commercial events to reimburse the city on some of these items, on these fee waivers. So I'm just going to run my eye over them today and make sure they're all in order. We got one from Rosendahl and Zein. See, this is a good one, you know, the annual alive and running for suicide prevention. See, now that's a good item. If Jack Weiss hadn't have brought out that memo in 2001, we'd still be seeing all these commercial events. So I want the girls in the valley, too, if they're watching, to stop, you know, knocking Jack Weiss down for not being quicker with his memo and getting these fee waivers. But we had to jump up and down, me and Zuma Dogg, everyone, we, how many times have we jumped up and down over these fee waivers? And finally, you're doing it right.
That item is now before us. Colleagues, if you could open the roll on item number 30 and close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item.
Madam President, did you wish to take up item number 28?
Well, my understanding that they need to make a change in the motion that's been distributed, and so we'll have to hold that on the desk. We can go to item 31. Mr. Zuma Dogg in the Valley.
Oh, yes, 31. Thank you for taking this now. Janice Hahn, I'm not talking to her, but I'm mentioning it, it's her district 15, and they want to fund additional services and support to the community. Doesn't say how much, oh, it's $50,000. Okay, I guess a property parcel tax to pay for things on property owners isn't enough. Now, more black hole. We've heard the Fox 11 news reports about where this money goes, and now Janice Hahn's district, and thank you, oh, of course, her partner in shadiness, Tony Kardnis, is seconding this motion for $50,000 for support to the community. I would like to know where this money's going. I would like to see receipts. I would like an audit. What is support to the community? Hey, Zuma Dogg will move there. Hey, how about 10 grand for Zuma Dogg? How about 1,000? Give me 50 bucks, whatever, out of that money.
That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 31, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item is item 33. Mr. Zuma Dogg, out in the San Fernando Valley, followed by Matt Dowd.
Yes, yes. Thank you to the Zuma Dogg Show, and I'd like to thank city council, my supporting staff. I couldn't be the star that I am without you in the city. Thank you for the airwaves, and what a shame, nobody's here. But this is about track maps, and you've heard me talk about track maps. And I wonder if the council members even know what they're voting on with these, because I've seen track maps, track map, track maps come through, and then all I've seen is density, density, density. And then you see LA Weekly, LA Times articles about dumb... And then you see LA Weekly, LA Times articles about dumb smart growth and the fact that you don't have enough infrastructure, you don't have enough, you don't have enough room in the schools, you don't have enough room on the roads, you're not getting the transportation infrastructure money, the goal line projects are shut down, you don't have enough of anything and you continue to build the density through these track maps. This is the foundation. When you see the track maps, that means, oh, here comes another one, 40-story skyscraper. Oh, they're not going to be doing the mass transit. They promised it's been delayed because they want to put it on the ballot, half percent sat tax to see if voters will pay for the money. So they passed on $320 million to pay for the goal line construction that they say they're going to build all these high-density track maps against and you've screwed up the city. I'm here, I'm really, Zuma Dogg says he is going to go down in history. There was a moment in time when this crazy guy showed up to over three months' worth of quorums every day to talk about the fact that you're building too much high-density through these track maps. You don't have enough roads, you don't have enough transportation, you can't have enough police, you don't have enough trash removal, you don't have enough anything and you continue to do it. It's absolutely mind-boggling. I think it's criminal and have already proven through public comment that the vacancy rates and the condo conversions were illegal and they've been shut down. And that's because, if we didn't call it through the attention, you would have kept going. So all of this that's happening is in violation. It doesn't get done without your palms being greased and without variances and zoning changes. It's a complete violation and I'm telling you, I'm going down in history because I'm here to say they're going to say, wow, was he right. Look at this. You guys are criminal in your behavior.
Thank you. Mr. Matt Dowd?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Zoom is right and I want to thank him actually for, you know, showing commitment, the effort. He does show up. I've never seen anyone more passionate about saving money in the city of Los Angeles. H. David Nahai's spending--
He does not appear to be talking about track maps.
Talking about track maps.
All right. See, the track maps, H. David Nahai is involved in these track maps because he's got to send water down to these properties, doesn't he, through the DWP? So I can talk about H. David Nahai because he doesn't know what he's doing either. He's approving, he's involved in all of this development. See, I noticed this one here, the Quimby fee, $169,000. Now that's a big development and guess what? Bill Rosendahl's district because he's in bed figuratively with the mayor. So that's what they're doing. That's how Bill Rosendahl got elected. That's how he's going to keep being elected because the mayor wants Bill Rosendahl because they're developing a West Side and these track maps are the blueprint.
We have warned you several times today. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. We will now go to item number 28. Mr. Parks, before we have you speak, I know they're about ready to distribute the amending motion. We do have three public speaker cards before us. Mr. Sacks, followed by Zuma Dogg, followed by Matt Dowd. Mr. Sacks?
Yes, good morning. Thank you again. The city's got an effort, a position against the state's efforts to borrow Proposition 1A funds. It would be nice if the city would step up when projects are allocated by the state When it's for the good of the city, they open up, they're chirping. When it's against the public, they say nothing. It would have been nice for the city transportation and the council to step up when they, according to the county board of supervisors, when the various construction authorities were enacted, I guess by the state because they were voted for, when they went into the public's pocket to fund those items. It would have been nice when the city council stepped up when the red line construction took place at Third and Fairfax, when the red line was supposed to go down Wilshire Boulevard and what they were doing over there is above and beyond anybody's question. Again, thank you for your time, your answers and your attention. One more beep for the crowd?
Mr. Dowd, did you want to speak on 28? Has he already spoken? I have a card from Zuma Dogg and a card from Matt Dowd on item 28.
Yes, I'm ready for my long shot.
Put a Zuma Dogg first, on the Valley.
Yes. Hey, by the way, this is about Prop 1A and it just shows why you have to vote no on all state money propositions because it says here that the state wants to borrow from the city's 1A fund? Excuse me, I think the city should be borrowing from the state's 1A fund. We're the ones that have the ports in the city and we funnel all the stuff down for the state and the rest of the country, jamming up our 710 and our freeways and it's our smog and our pollution and our everything way too bad because of it. So I'd like to say hell no to Arnold Schwarzenegger. You ain't getting squat except the thing is, we know in reality that the state's going to get this money from the city, which is why no on all taxes. It is never for what you think. Here's another example. You think you're voting for one thing in the city and now the state's going to raid the money? No on all taxes on the ballot.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. I believe you have one minute, two minutes left.
Yeah, I'll take one on this because this is, this is the best one of the day because it's opposition by the city of Los Angeles because someone else wants to borrow and the borrow is in inverted commas, people, borrow funds from the 1A and that are Prop 1A money. But I say yes. I say loan them the money, charge them interest, we might as well make money on it and then we won't be using that money to overdevelop the city of Los Angeles. So I'm against this completely. I say yes, take away the Prop 1A funds and do something better than this city council is doing with them because right now you're using all the money for the wrong things. You're getting involved with these developers, cronyism, they're taking all the money upfront and we're not getting what we're, what we're, what we thought we were told when we voted for this Prop 1A money. So yeah, I say let the state have it, let them borrow it, take it away because you guys don't deserve it.
Thank you. That marks the end of our public speaking cards. Mr. Zine is our first speaker, followed by Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Madam President. The matter would impact obviously the budget of the city of Los Angeles as well as other municipalities and I want to note that tomorrow on the 24th, 11:30 a.m., the Independent Cities Association Contract Cities, California Cities, is going to hold a news conference at 11:00 a.m. in Downey to publicize the concern, not only to large municipalities but to small cities throughout the state of California. The financial impact would be massive. On the property tax side alone, the number is being floated at $1.4 billion, which means that for the city of Los Angeles, we would lose approximately $150 million and that's on top of $350 million already projected 2010 during the budget last spring. We talked about a big gap. So the bottom line is, we would have about a half a billion dollar gap or deficit to the city of Los Angeles. The state is expected to run out of cash by August 4th and what they're trying to do is have this settled before that time. Also noted on 1A, there's also Prop 42, Prop 63, Prop 10 and Prop 49 money. There's additional pots of money that they're exploring to tap into to bail out the 15-plus billion dollar state budget. I know that this council has this motion to support municipalities across the state are supporting and the bottom line to this is people can contact the governor's office, contact their state representatives, both members of the legislature and the state senate, tell them, don't put the burden on the back of the local municipalities because whatever they borrow from the local municipalities will come out of our local budgets, which will curtail public safety and other services that are delivered. So it's a critical time. The state needs to somehow balance the budget, but basically what they want to do is borrow the money from the municipalities, including the city of Los Angeles, which will be devastating. We have a balanced budget. We've managed our funds. The mayor presented it. It was done in a responsible manner by the budget committee, approved by the council and now the state wants to come in and take money away and whether it's repaid or not may be another question. In addition to that, I know my time is running out, a lot of people want to talk on this, is when the voters approve money for transportation, they want it for transportation, they don't like the bait and switch, where it goes for transportation, then gets taken out of transportation dollars and put into something else and that's traditionally what's happened. But it's not just the 1A funds. There's a number of pots of money that they want to dip into to bail out their $15 billion. That'll then continue to the next year and the next year and the next year. So basically, they're going to be taking the money from all municipalities, it's not just the city of Los Angeles, but this would affect large and small cities throughout the state. So please contact the governor's office, the state senators and the assembly members and tell them to balance the budget, but not through this mechanism of borrowing and putting it on our backs. Once they take it from us, it's going to be difficult to repay. It also affects the county. Mr. Fujioka, who's the county administrative officer, it will have a major impact on the county operations, which fund hospitals and other county services. So it will be devastating and hopefully they'll listen to the cries and the pleas. Again, there is a news conference tomorrow with all the small cities through independent cities, contract cities, California cities, in Downey to talk about this from the local municipalities. It's always Los Angeles talking about it, but these other municipalities are going to be heard, they're concerned as well as the large cities such as Los Angeles. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Parks is our next speaker.
Thank you, Madam President. This substitute motion basically is just a little bit more in-depth than the prior motion, but one of the things I think is important for us to realize is that we as a city has gone forward on our budget, but the public has made, would made certain commitments as it relates to voting on prior propositions in 2004 and 2006. I'd like to ask the CAO and CLA to come up to the table and kind of walk us through what some of the legal mandates and prohibitions are about those two propositions so the general public would be aware of exactly what they voted on and what were their criteria for borrowing from state government, by the state government of local funds. And let me ask the CAO if you can start off by just advising us exactly what those prior propositions are and Prop 42 money and what were the real prohibitions that the public voted on? You can hold my time?
Sure. I think the biggest one that was voted on by the state of California was the Prop 1A and it dealt with protecting local revenues in the areas of property tax, the vehicle license fee and others as well. Now, in general, there is a borrowing based on a statement or a declaration of emergency. Basically, there's a borrowing period of up to three years with a repayment within that three years with, with interest. Now, we don't know what, how that interest is set or calculated. That's something that we will have to further research with the folks up in Sacramento. But it is a very real concern, given the numbers that are being floated out there, if they take up to a certain amount in property tax. That is a real hit to, to our budget. Certainly, the Prop 42 money, that $36, $37 million that goes into our, our street miles, our slurry seals, some of our other projects as well. That is real impact on the services to the city here and that could really impact our goal. I think the goal this year was to get well over 200, 235 miles plus 400 miles of slurry seal. With some of the numbers with those reductions, we can be looking at reduction anywhere of 90 miles in slurry seal, 90 miles of, of street resurfacing, depending on different options and things.
Now, is this, since 2004 or 2006, is this the first time they've done this borrowing strategy?
Yes.
Okay. So we don't know exactly, like you said, the interest rate and we've not seen the process of how they would repay it?
That's correct. This would be the first time that they would invoke this and we've, since we've never been in this situation, how this would play out, there remains to be seen.
Now, was there supposedly, that's mandated by the public's vote, that there be some declaration of emergency by the governor and the legislature?
That's, that's correct. Severe financial hardship should be declared. But there again, what does that mean?
I mean, was it, when they used that term, was that something we'd assume or were they to do something formally to notify the residents of the state that this condition existed?
I'm not aware of any formal declaration. I'm not exactly sure how that would work, but whether there were any triggers, whether there was a formal declaration, et cetera, actually, I'm not aware of anything.
Jerry, do you have any knowledge on that?
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by formal declaration. The governor has to very specifically declare a state of fiscal emergency and then in whatever budget bills are adopted by the legislature, that language would have to be included in that as well as the language for the borrowing. It's presumed that the interest rates and the terms of repaying that borrowing would be in whatever budget bill, but it would require first the governor calling for a state of fiscal emergency.
And when that state of emergency, a fiscal emergency, would be something beyond just balancing the budget?
I certainly think that's the intent. Yeah, I, I think the, the argument against that is whether or not a balanced budget has already been presented and they simply just can't come to an agreement on it. So the, the definition of a fiscal emergency, I think, would certainly be key.
And there's terms or dollar value that's been thrown around of $150 million. Now, thrown on top of what we view as our expected structural deficit, what would the impact overall on the 2010 budget for the city?
I think if you throw the 150 on top of a close to 300 million, we're looking at, at 450 as we go forward.
Close to a half a billion dollars.
That's correct.
Okay, and so we've gone through that exercise before of what would be a half billion dollars worth of services in the city. So it would cut into personnel would generally be more than a freeze. You'd be cutting into personnel. Personnel cuts would then correspond to go into services that could not be rendered.
That's correct. We actually went through this discussion a little over this, this past year with the TOT and Proposition S, the impacts across the board, how they would affect the residents.
And then do we have any figure at this time as to what the amount of possibly of unfunded mandates that go on top of this potential taking of funds?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. We can get back, but interestingly, it's been several million dollars a year.
So annually, several million dollars that they impose on the municipalities throughout the state?
That's correct.
Okay. And then let me ask you on, would you explain to the general public what the whole issue of the spillover dollars are and, and what the legal ramification if those are taken before they go into their actual funding cycles or funding locations?
That's pretty complicated and I actually may need staff to come over and talk more about spillover, but as we understand it, transportation funding is, is also protected by Prop 1A, I think in 2006. But it's our understanding that the Department of Finance has determined that some of this spillover funding, in fact, can be taken prior to it being characterized as, as transportation Prop 42 funding. So the assertion is that the state doesn't need to borrow that money, they can simply take it.
But when we use the term spillover, that's money above what we expected to come in. Is that a simplistic definition?
Yeah, basically, when they passed the TDA law, they dedicated the sales tax on gasoline to a, cover a certain general fund hole. And then any additional money that was collected over above, over and above what was necessary to cover that hole in the general fund was called spillover. And so now because the gas prices have increased so much, more than sales tax on other things or the sales tax revenues from gas, gasoline sales have increased so much because the gas price has gone up, the spillover count has gotten very large. Spillover can be for the TDA functions, but the state can at its discretion take those funds. But what happens is that when the CTC fixes their budget, they have to use what's in legislation and the legislation is, these monies go to transit. And so they build a budget based on these monies going to transit and then after that, the state comes in and takes the spillover funds and so then transit has a hole.
Is it our belief from the city that the spillover funds do not lose their identity just because they go into that spillover account? They still remain as part of the source they were generated from?
I don't know that we have an opinion on that.
I'm just saying from the city's perspective.
I would say we certainly should assert that. Now, if, if the state in fact tries to do this, you know, we would need to see what the rationale is and the analysis behind their assertions that they can just take the money.
And then also, we've been asked, is, are there any remedies for the city or municipalities if this taking occurs?
Well, not really. You know, I-- You know, I suppose if we wanted to challenge the declaration of fiscal emergency, we could do so. You know, but the fact of the matter is that if the state decides to take the money, the money's going to stop flowing. So from a practical standpoint, at least on the short term, until any litigation could get resolved, there really is no recourse. It would create a substantial hole in the city's budget.
But if there's no declared, formal declared emergency, does that give the city any additional leverage?
Well, if they don't declare the urgency, then under 1A, they cannot borrow the money.
Okay, so the issue, but as of today, we've not heard that that emergency's been declared.
That's right.
1A only covers the Prop 42 funds, so I don't believe it covers the spillover funds.
Go over that again.
I believe 1A only covers the Prop 42 funds, the sales tax on gasoline that goes to the STIP, it goes to the cities and county, and it goes to transit. 1A only covers those funds. It doesn't cover the spillover funds.
It only covers the funds that are directed to specific allocation.
Yes.
So any spillover, it's like general fund money?
Yeah.
Okay. Colleagues, I think it's important that we go on record at this time to let the state know as far as what our concerns are, and the reason for this substitute motion is to be very definitive as to where we think the shortfalls will occur, where we think that the mandates of the general public were in place when they voted on certain propositions, and how the taking of this money is, in our view, illegal. And I think it's important also, and I hope we've given a copy of the letter to each member that was sent to the legislature, will be sent to the legislature today, that will be in addition to this motion. And so I'd ask that we have a unanimous vote to move forward on sending that message to our state legislature as to this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I think Mr. Parks in his question has laid out, and those of you who answer some of the questions, the concern we have with any potential threat of taking some of the money, particularly on the issue of transportation, as we are going to the voters, hopefully to ask them to support. And when you look at, you know, millions of dollars, and I know, excuse me, when Mr. Garcetti introduced a motion last week, was talking on 1A, we weren't as, didn't know as much about the transportation aspect of that, and that's why the amendment is before us today to talk about that, and using those local funds to balance the state budget. You know, the reason why voters went to 1A was to protect Proposition 42 was very clear. And as we look at the traffic issue being one of the biggest issue in the city of Los Angeles and this region, and we have built our plans, both the city of Los Angeles, the MTA, this region, on the support that we were promised by the state of California. And so it really will hit the city hard when we have to go out to the voters, as well as, we've been a self-help city, and we had this debate last week, the importance of we are willing to take some of those tough stands and go out and ask for our taxpayers and our residents to support these efforts. We want to be able to deliver on those based on the assumptions that the state was going to provide those funds. And I know that it is particularly tough, and they have a budget just like we did, having to balance it and to make tough decisions. But I think there is an expectation, and in some ways, a legal position that the city has for those dollars that they could potentially take that would limit our ability to, whether it be police officers on the street, and more importantly, our public safety officers and our transportation programs here in the city of Los Angeles. And so we really cannot afford these losses in revenue, and I think the message we're sending is, we want to work with you, we want to help you, but we can't have you take all our money. And so that's really the message that we're sending. We understand they're in a difficult spot, but the impact to us would be devastating here in the city of Los Angeles. And so I think it's clear in the motion we have before us today, as well as a letter that we signed, a letter that the mayor signed that says, please don't do this, and let's sit down and talk about how we can work together to solve some of your budget problems. So I think we want to be clear though, early on, our opposition to any potential raid on our local funds here in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Cardenas.
I think it's important that we pass this resolution, reminding the state of California that we all have obligations. We have obligations as a city to make sure that we balance our budget. The state has obligations to make sure that they balance their budget. But as a former budget chairman myself and the state legislature, I know how tempting it is and how easy it is for the legislature to do as they please and to ignore the facts and the matters down the road about how they're affecting local governments and the same constituents as they have, unfortunately. So it's important for us to remind them that when it comes to transportation funds, those should go to transportation. When it comes to Prop 1A, that was something that was passed. They should respect that and understand that borrowing your way out of the situation is not helping. You're just putting it off for another year. And the fact of the matter is, it's unfortunate that in the past, when previous governors have raided funds, it took lawsuits for the courts to finally decide what authority the legislature did or didn't have. And the fact of the matter is Pete Wilson actually did quite a few things when he became governor, because they were in a similar mess, and he raided certain accounts, lawsuits ensued. Some years later, the courts did determine that certain accounts that were raided could not be raided anymore. Unfortunately, the spirit is still the same, but the courts didn't opine on every single account. So what the legislature has the opportunity to do is do the wrong thing, and then on borrowed time, realize that sooner or later, they're going to be told, you can't do that anymore. So that's a little bit of history on how Sacramento treats us, and there's an old saying, an old, old saying in California, and it goes something like this, hold on to your women and your horses, the legislature's in session. What that means is, they have a lot of latitude and a lot of authority, but it doesn't mean that just because they have the ability, that they should exercise that, because there's something wrong about that. For example, borrowing in the billions of dollars on accounts that should be used for something else, and hindering other governments such as local counties and cities and districts from being able to do their job, is not helping the situation. We're hurting Californians by doing that. It's the same Californians they represent as we represent. The only problem is, when they don't give us the funds that are due to us, we can't hold to our public safety commitments to our constituents, we can't put the infrastructure in place that our constituents deserve, and the money was there for that anyway. So with all due respect to the legislature, this resolution is very important, and also as a board member of the League of Cities, the League of Cities is in full support of this kind of resolution, is encouraging every city and actually county or local government in the state of California to pass such a resolution so that we can all remind Sacramento. 99.99% of all the cities and counties agree with this kind of resolution. Please balance the budget properly, don't do it on the backs of local government.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Weisar followed by Mr. Alakon Reyes, Wesson, Rosendahl and Parks.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I think we went through this already, but are there any estimates as to how much we'll lose if we lose the $18?
Well, total, it could be up to about $150 million. Again, it's difficult to say because there's no specific proposal. But based on the dollar figures that we're hearing, and based on the city's loss the last time the state borrowed money, it would be about $100 million or so in the property tax range, and up to about $50 million or so in transportation funding.
Thank you. And the council has gone on record already to oppose similar proposals from the state legislature when it comes to Proposition 10, early childhood education. And we were very concerned about the city and the region in the Los Angeles area losing dollars to provide early childhood ed for our young people and get away from an investment that the voters of the state of California had decided to make. But there's also other propositions that the CLA's office has alerted us to, and that is Proposition 49, the after-school programs, and also Proposition 63 for mental health. Now, looking at the big picture, should we also send a message along with, like we did with Prop 10 and today with Prop 1A, to say that they, the state not look at Prop 49 and Prop 63? How much money would the city lose if they do tap into those funds? 63 and 49, do we know that?
Do not know offhand, but yeah, I think the message is to leave local revenues alone, for the state to do what the city has to do, which is balance the budget with the resources it has. Now, in that mix, it's also important to note, we're also hearing that there may be an impact in redevelopment agencies, and there is some sense that the impact on the city CRA might be $11 million. And those, of course, go directly to capital improvements and other things in blighted areas in your districts. So I think globally, I think the message is balance the budget on revenues and expenditure cuts that the state controls, not on the backs of the cities.
But we do realize some local revenues from Proposition 63 and Proposition 49. Is that correct? We just don't know how much offhand or how much we do.
We'd have to get back to you on that.
But we do realize some funds. And colleagues, I mean, if we're sending the broader message that leave local revenues alone, we should also apply it to the other propositions where we will also lose out on some dollars. And as some of us used the argument today, that the voters decided to put funding in particular programs, and now the state's taking away to do something else, that applies as well to after-school programs and mental health services that the voters decided to invest in. I'm not sure if we should do it here through an amendment, or we don't want to convolute our message with Prop 1A, or that we do separate motions. But if we're making the argument to leave local revenues alone and to not tamper with the intent of voters when they voted for those propositions, I think Proposition 49 and Proposition 63 certainly fit in those categories. I'd be happy to introduce a motion on Friday to make that possible, or some of you think we should make that amendment today, I'm happy to do that as well. Thank you.
Mr. Alakon.
Well, I think clearly this is something that we all support, so it's not, it's not a question of controversy amongst the council. So really, my questions are relative to strategy, and the fact that, the fact that we are Los Angeles, we can have impact on the legislature, but we need to be focused on who we're trying to impact here. The governor, the speaker, Karen Bass, the president pro tem of the Senate, Don Perata, have all said they do not want to tap into this resource. So it's a very specific, essentially Republican agenda to try and take these dollars from our bailiwick. And I don't know what strategy our city can employ, but perhaps we have some impact on some of the legislators who might be interested in supporting that position. But I'm also curious as to how we might utilize the fact that we have two former speakers in our leadership, the budget chair, former budget chair, myself, who served in the legislature if there is a strategic endeavor. We have a couple of conservative members, although some people think they're moderate, who might be able to go up and work on some of the Republicans on the other side of this issue. But we also have a very healthy and strong business community that I believe would advocate very, very strongly consistent with our agenda, who has historically been a champion for educational issues, that we should utilize. We should go to Sacramento, not necessarily in a delegation, but maybe in a delegation, to send a loud message. I think the most prominent group that we can send would be the business community. The most effective group would be the business community to talk about the ramifications. I mean, let's not kid ourselves, there isn't a legislator in Sacramento who doesn't understand the ramifications of the taking of this money, and who doesn't understand that, you know, it's money that benefits the state. And so they get it. The only thing that's going to work here is effective leverage, and I believe that our business community is in the best position to send that message. So if, I'm going to be quiet now, but I'd like to get the sort of response from our team.
Well, I certainly agree, the business community, you know, really any outreach that can be done. There are some Republican legislators that overlap, at least one council district call should be made. I think it would also be advisable to engage, you know, PPL and UFLAC in this, because certainly they are very much at risk as well. You know, if we take a $100 million hit to our general fund, we're going to have to balance our budget in some fashion, and I think those voices would be heard. I've spoken to the county. The county has involved their public safety unions. They are also focusing on speaking to Southern California Republicans and others, so.
Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Wesson, Rosendahl and Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to thank Jerry and the CLA for the July 21 memo. You break it down very succinctly, which propositions are being considered, and you give us a list of state officials that we should be contacting because of this move that is being contemplated. But I wanted to ask you and my colleagues if this is one of those occasions in which we stimulate the neighborhood council network and what could be done to apprise people of what is happening to our budget, what's going to happen in their neighborhoods, all the propositions they voted for, and because of their action of taking that money, we're not going to realize many of our transportation projects and all the way down the list. Is it worth our while to make an impact on these other elected officials by stimulating that type of interface communication from the neighborhood councils and the network that is natural to the city family? Is it worth our while? Is it worth our time? Was it just basically raw politics that this resolution? I mean, can you just shed some light on that and your perspective? Please hold my time.
Well, I think the real problem here is one of timing. You know, clearly, the more the community can be engaged and heard, that's helpful. But this is literally something that is going to come to a head in the next week to 10 days at most. So again, some of the issues that have been discussed here in terms of strategy, you know, the connections and the issues that can, as Mr. Alakon indicated, get to the Republicans, the reality is that there are very few, very little part of the city, either on the Assembly or Senate side, that are represented by Republicans. So there is not a direct constituency there for the most part.
I see. Well, perhaps at a minimum, we should inform the public as to the consequences of these actions, because there are expectations from these propositions, and there will be a definite impact on our city service levels should we lose these types of funds. Perhaps we could just get a, some type of a scenario or description of what are the potential consequences of these actions, or do we just wait? I mean, people need to know what is happening and how we're being affected. Is that a summary that can be put together in a quick fashion so that at least we can alert our constituents as to what's going on? A one-pager, just a bullet form as to what could happen to this city if this occurs?
We could do that. With the numbers we're talking about, we could put together what that means. And again, I think the priorities of this council and the mayor, you know, what a $100 million reduction is going to mean to non-public safety services. We could certainly put that together for you.
I would appreciate that. I don't know how you follow that directive in the form of a resolution, or is this a aside or a different directive apart from the resolution, or just a request?
We'll be happy to report back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
I think what we can do is have them provide that information to us so we can share that with our constituencies and others, and maybe even attach it if we have it ready, to send it forward to say this is the kind of impact that we'd have in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President.
Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President and members. I don't know if I ever heard Mr. Cardenas's saying about, you know, hold on to your wives, your women and your horses. Well, I will say that Sacramento can take my horse, because I don't have one, but they can't take my wife. The reality of the situation, members, is that they're going to take the money. I'm not saying that it's wrong or that it's right. I believe that they will declare it an emergency. The problem that we have in Sacramento is where it relates to the budget. You have to have a two-thirds vote. There are only three states in the United States. There are only three states in the United States of America that have that requirement, and those are the three states that have problems every year at budget times. We have political problems where it relates to no one in one party in particular wants to raise taxes. So you're forced with, you know, having to rob Peter to pay Paul. Now, with that said, I think the resolution is great, and we should all vote on this resolution. But I think that we have two outside shots. I mean, that's if the moon, the stars align properly. We need to engage the mayor and other members of this council. We need to identify all of the members of the LA delegation and try to get them to commit with us early. If they have already committed to support this, and in a lot of cases, their hands are just tied, they are, then we may want to creatively work with them to try to come up with some alternatives that will minimize the sting that we're going to feel. And I just... And then the other aspect is quite possibly, and it looks like you're on it, that we might have some kind of a legal defense, maybe. But I think it was Councilmember Alacon that indicated it is not uncommon for them to take the money now and just fight it out in courts, because basically what they're trying to do is to survive from this year to the next year. This resolution will mean absolutely nothing, members. It will mean absolutely nothing at all, and 100, 150 million, whatever the projected amount is, will be gone. But we need to creatively and quickly see what kind of support we can garner, in particular from our LA delegation, and then hope and pray that the League of Cities can assist along with the business community as well. I would be willing to do whatever I could to assist in planning the strategy and participating in our lobbying. But I want to make it crystal clear that it will be, in my opinion, an uphill battle. I cannot envision the members of the legislature wanting to cut more from Health and Human Services. Whenever we have a budget crisis such as this, and this is a bad one, the individuals on the bottom, the individuals that cannot take care of themselves are the individuals that get rolled. And it disturbs us. I know it disturbed me tremendously. So if I had to make a choice, I would choose protecting the poor in hopes that my cities, especially a great city like Los Angeles, could get creative enough to survive. So there are a lot of members that are up there, and I would have to say, I don't know, Mr. Cardenas may have escaped, but Mr. Alacon and I have voted to take money away from transportation projects and to take money away from city governments because you have no alternative. So basically, what I am suggesting that we look at is at a very, again, similar to what Richard said, very focused approach where we quickly try to gauge the support of the LA delegation and see if we can't get them to, you know, stay tough with us in the paint. If they have already committed, and they may have, then we need to creatively come up with maybe there's a deal that we cut that can reduce the amount of the hit or something to that effect, because we don't want to go in and lose $150 million. And for us to just get up and say, we have shared constituents, which we do, Mr. Cardenas, but at the end of the day, I think they will take the money from us. So, I mean, I wish I had something better to say.
Thanks for the good news.
But I just, it is what it is, and I think we have, again, I'll just reiterate it, and then I will sit down and shut up. I think we have two shots. One would be for us to really see legally if we have anything that we can use as leverage. If I remember, I think that 1A is written in a way which gives them probably the flexibility to do this. I would say if there was ever an emergency, that this probably would qualify. The other thing, again, would be for us to take the temperature quickly of the LA delegation, see who will stay with us to the bitter end, which is the hardest thing in the world to gauge with the legislature, because when the leadership squeezes and you're dependent upon the leadership, it's hard to refuse. But I would suggest that we do those things. If anybody would want me to sit in in a meeting or what have you, I'd be glad to do this. But I think, members, we need to brace ourselves, because it's not about what's right, it's about what's real. And the reality is, they will take this money from us.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Rosendall.
Yeah, you know, I love to hang on Herb's words. I call him the silver fox, even though he doesn't have silver hair, but he was the speaker and understands the dynamic up there. There are two things I want to say. First is public trust. You know, the public doesn't trust its elected officials. Here's a perfect example why they shouldn't trust their elected officials. Steal $100 million from our general revenue from our property tax, and then another 50 from measures the people voted on for specific reasons. Obviously, 1A is this transportation billions we need to do our thing. 42, transportation. 63, mental health. 10, early childhood development. 49, after-school programs. Okay. The big problem, colleagues, is that the legislature is a two-thirds vote to get things done. It's the tyranny of the minority that runs this state. How dare they strangle the political process and the will of the people? We need to change that in the Constitution of California and let it be a supermajor, maybe 55% or something, but not this two-thirds that always strangulates us in getting anything done. Secondly, we're going to put a ballot measure. Tomorrow, MTA is going to vote a half a cent sales tax. This half a cent sales tax is to create billions more to get us out of this massive gridlock that we in Southern California have had enough of. So why would I vote yes on a half a cent sales tax if I already see them stealing and robbing Peter to pay Paul? The only comfort I have is apparently that legislation is written that it will only go for LA County, and they can't raid that money. I hope that's the case with that half a cent, so we're left able to trust at least the local elected officials in following through on what the people voted on. But this other stuff is just too much. $100 million from our property tax and $50 million from those other measures. I've been engaged, as Jan Perry has, on Prop 63 money, which is mental health money that we want to use for homeless issues. I want to get psychiatric social workers out there, bond with these homeless people, and get them into permanent housing with supportive services. Prop 63 is there to help us on that. And of course, our kids, obviously on both Prop 10 and Prop 49, need the support they should get. So all we can say is wise up, lighten up, get with the program, don't rob Peter to pay Paul. Come up with gutsy revenue generation streams, governor and legislature, and show the people that you are fighting for all of these social issues that matter to all of us. So that's it, just a speech. Thank you very much.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask Street Services to come up, Mr. Sauceda, and just to give us an overview. I think somewhere in the neighborhood of almost $40 million of our Prop 40 money goes to street services. And if you could just give the council an overview and the public, what are some of the issues that may be in jeopardy? Could you hold my time?
Yes, Nasser Sauceda, Assistant Director Bureau of Street Services. Certainly, the elimination of the Prop 42 funding would have a tremendous, a significant impact on our efforts to preserve the largest municipal street network in the nation. If a different source of funding is not identified to cover for this funding, for the possible loss of Prop 42 funding, we're talking about approximately 90 miles of street resurfacing of this current fiscal year and 90 miles of slurry ceiling, combined, of course, creating a total of 180 miles of street preservation efforts. One of the biggest impacts that we're going to have will be noticed on residential streets because Prop 42 money is being directed towards residential streets. And as we all know very well, residential streets are the streets in worst condition in our street network. So in a nutshell, and of course, this is just an average, each council district would be losing approximately between 12 to 15 miles of street work this fiscal year.
Okay. And also, would that include, you mentioned streets, what about sidewalks? Is that...
At this point, Prop 42 money is being only directed towards street work.
Okay. What about your overall budget? If there are cuts in your overall budget, what would be the impact on sidewalks? We only came up with like a mile, point, something per district for this budget.
Right. At this point, yeah, we do have the 26 miles of sidewalk plus the double module for the 50-50, but the elimination of the Prop 42 money will not affect those programs.
Again, the overall dropage in your budget would... If your budget was cut otherwise, you would impact sidewalks.
Oh, yes. If we were to take, borrow money from A to take it to B, automatically, we would have impact on the other programs. You're right.
So if you use the state budgetary process of robbing Peter to pay Paul, you'd end up without streets or sidewalks.
Right.
Okay. Let me just... Mr. Reyes asked a question earlier, and we're passing out a document from the League of Cities where they recommend some phone numbers and people to call. Such positions as the Senate President Pro Tem, the Senate Republican Leader, the Assembly Speaker, the Assembly Republican Leader are numbers and names, and also in the letter that each member received. Those positions, plus the governor and several others, including the City of Los Angeles delegation, are all copied on this letter. Let me ask, as Mr. Wesson made a comment earlier, in dealing with that two-point plan that he brought up, is that something that the CLA is going to take on as a mission in the sense of looking at a way to at least address this issue?
Sure, we, yes, we will do that. We have been working with the mayor's office, and we'll be talking to them about who they're talking with and their strategy, et cetera.
Is the expectation is we'll have more information on this issue for Friday, or some type of a briefing for Friday?
We can certainly give you a status report. I have no idea whether there will be any more specificity from the state by Friday.
Okay. Madam President, let me ask if we could move forward on the letters and the motion, but also hold a portion of this over for Friday for at least that briefing or what was accomplished from this meeting to Friday to keep us aware before the weekend.
I think we can do that and ask our city attorney and city clerk to make sure we're doing what we're supposed to do in CLA on this item. Last speaker is Mr. Zein. Mr. Zein?
Thank you, thank you. Just briefly, following Councilmember Weezer's comments about protecting our local funds, I want to make a motion to amend this resolution to include our opposition to taking or borrowing the funds from any other voter-approved proposition or other local revenue source to expand it out. And this is based upon the earlier comments by you, Mr. Weezer. Thank you. Should, Mr. Smith, this should be our standard policy. It should be our standard policy for the city, but we want to include that with this, and hopefully it'll have some impact to save the revenues and provide the services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. That item is now before us, as indicated by Mr. Parks, and those items moving forward, but we'll have this item back on Friday to get a status report before the City Council on Friday. So, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, is item number 27, and that was called special for Councilmember Hahn.
Yes, and Ms. Hahn, before you speak, we did have one public speaker card. Is Mr. Matt Dowd here? Mr. Matt Dowd? Okay, we have now closed public comment. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I really wanted to call this special today, even though it's already happened, but I think it's very important that we, as the City Council of Los Angeles, go on record supporting this. Yesterday, I got word that HR 802, introduced by Representative Oberstar, was signed into law by our President of the United States. And this is very good news. Why? Because this is a bill that will allow our nation to finally enforce MARPOL Treaty, which is an international treaty that requires our ships to use low sulfur fuel. Two years ago, the Port of Los Angeles and Long Beach adopted the Historic Clean Air Action Plan, which will reduce air pollution from port operations, including ships, by nearly half over the next five years. And we know that the ships represent the single largest source of emissions at the Port of Los Angeles. We know that 20% of the air emissions in Los Angeles region actually come from our ships. And while we're making these strides locally, in fact, both Long Beach and Los Angeles, I'm very proud to say, have begun recently a program where they are subsidizing shippers for the cost of using low sulfur fuel while in our harbor. But we still have a long way to go. And while they're using this fuel voluntarily, and we're helping to subsidize them so that they don't really have an excuse for not using it because of the costs, they continue to burn this dirty fuel outside the harbor and in most other harbors around the world, and that certainly is affecting Planet Earth. We need an international solution, and the MARPOL Treaty gives us that. HR 802 amends our existing laws so that EPA and the Coast Guard can actually enforce the International MARPOL Treaty, which requires that the ships use low sulfur fuel. The next step is to have the US EPA submit an application to the International Maritime Organization to designate North America as the sulfur emissions control area, which will actually help us to reduce even further sulfur emissions in and around our ports. I, again, am very pleased that the President has signed this bill into law, but I wanted us to stand up and be counted, supporting this and thanking the President for signing this. I think this is really the next great step towards ultimately requiring ships, no matter where they are, to use low sulfur fuel, which will dramatically decrease the emissions that people are breathing all over. It's time for us to work together internationally. I think we have great support from other countries to also enter into these kinds of agreements. So even though it's been signed, it's an opportunity for us to go on record saying, again, we thank the President and we support this great bill, which I think moves us forward to cleaner air all over the world.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. LeBanche.
Thank you for your leadership, Ms. Hahn, on this. I just thought of an idea. There's a group called C40, which is the top 40 cities population-wide in the world, maybe our 25 sister cities of which many have ports, that we ask that their councils take this action and be a voices too. So a friendly amendment, if, just to add, ask for the Sisters of Legislative Analysis Office to direct a similar communication to the appropriate sister cities to ask their councils to take and stand and support this. Is that friendly enough? Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBanche. Mr. Cardenas, followed by Mr. Rosendall.
Thank you, Janice, for bringing this resolution forward. I think it's important for all the people who care about the environment as a whole, especially Angelenos, need to understand when you combine the Long Beach Port and the Los Angeles Port, when you look at them, you can't tell where one starts and one ends, but together, they are the largest port in the country. They're called America's Port. And the fact of the matter is, that place right there is the largest source of air emissions in all of Southern California, probably all of California then. So the bottom line is, I want to also thank the federal government for following through with something that's long overdue, and that's something that we looked into here in the city and realized that that is a national/international action. We could not take action locally, and we had to wait for the federal government to do this. So this is long overdue, and they finally got it done. So I think it's important for us to take the time to recognize them and thank them for doing what they should have done and to make sure that we move forward. And also, Janice Hahn knows this, being the chairwoman of the committee that oversees the port and the airport, there's a lot of things that go on with airports and the ports in Los Angeles and throughout the country that we cannot take action. It has to take federal action for us to see the right thing hap- It has to take federal action for us to see the right thing happen. So I think it's important for us to take this opportunity to remind the constituents that, yes, the federal government did something good. We want to thank them, and we should. And then also, when you come to us, understand when we say it takes the FAA or the federal government that oversees these ports and airports to take action, please understand we're telling you the truth, and we are trying everything that we can to get their attention and to get them to do the right thing. So thank you, Janice, for doing that job and getting their attention.
Thank you, Mr. Carden. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, serving on the committee with you is a real pleasure, especially when you take such a positive, determined, tenacious position on cleaning up the air, cleaning up the port. I mean, you've done it all, and we had Geraldine Natt here earlier. I know you were at another event, and we couldn't help but talk about you and your leadership and what you've provided for us. It's a pleasure to see we're getting toward a cleaner port, we're cleaning up our air, we're getting the vehicles to either get out of their diesel particulate matter situation, we're moving it into electric cars, doing all those things. But every time we meet in committee, you constantly bring up those issues, and this again was an example of you showing, at least we saw the President do something right and sign something that affects all of us in a positive way. So thank you for bringing the highlight to us again, and let's keep cleaning up our air. It's the only air we have. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
We'd like to go forth with on item twenty-eight, and those items we're moving quickly through. I think now we will go to executive session. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam President. Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Okay, we can clear the desk.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
And there is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Wise requests to be excused to arrive at eleven-thirty Friday, September twelfth for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay. That will be approved.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Council will be going into closed session on items number thirty-four through thirty-six pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9A.
Me as a man I was a disaster in China. But today I said they walk with a smile. We have to come again, I say we really have to shine. Look who we just let, say we just let it just nice. We have to do it good, I say what sugar and spice. Look who we just let, we just let it just nice. We have to come again, say what in sugar and spice.
Ração, por piedade esconde o que eu dentro da alma sinto. Se amor se mostra em meus lábios, ele faz crer que eu sempre minto. Não quer o de verdade, seu amor é as leis da razão. É um fim como deste austera, chega embora. Não sei não, não sei crer, já me quite meu agüe. Se crê, não crê, se crê, é uma merca má.
Thank you, we are back in open session. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam President. First item is item number thirty-four, and that settlement in the case of City of Los Angeles versus Stevenshire, and settlement amount is $575,000.
Next item?
Yes.
We'll vote in an open session, okay. Vote in open session. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
The next item is item number thirty-five, and that's the workers' comp case settlement in the case of Malali versus City of L.A., and the disability amount is $118,312.50.
Madam Clerk, please open the roll on that item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Last item is item number thirty-six, and that settlement in the case of Eric Robinson versus City of L.A., settlement amount is $1,750,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please open the roll on that item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Those items have been approved, and I believe there was one that needed to go forth with.
Yes, that was the item number thirty-four. And do you wish all the closed sessions to go forth with?
We'll have all them go forth with.
And that would clear the desk.
Thank you. Do we have announcements today? If not, we do have adjourning motion. You have an announcement, Mr. Labange? An adjourning motion?
Yeah, announcement is tonight we're having a summer bike ride on Fourth Street, positively Fourth Street, meet at the Chateau Park Rec Center. We're gonna go out Fourth Street all the way to Park Boulevard, Bicycle Boulevard. The public is invited to attend. Bring your helmets and your bicycles. Six o'clock tonight, Chateau Park, Fourth and Vermont.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. The announcement, Mr. Wesson?
Yes, Madam President, I first want to give special thanks to Councilmember Smith for sharing this idea with Councilmember Wesson. So I guess in some respect, this is a Smith-Wesson production. I will be providing movies in the park for residents of the Tenth District, beginning this Saturday, the twenty-sixth of July, at Rainier Park. The event will start at approximately 6:15. It is free. People will receive free popcorn, free hot dogs, free raisinettes. There will be music, face painters, and we will have very good raffle prizes. The following week, I'll be partnering with Councilmember Parks for the showing of a movie called Goonies, that will be at Rancho Cienega Park at 7:15. Again, it is free, and everything, free popcorn, face painting, so the community is invited to come out and have a night of movies, and dinner is on us anyway. Everyone is invited, and I hope you will join us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. Do we have adjourning motions? Yes, okay. If I could ask everyone to please rise? Everyone to please rise? Thank you. Mr. Labange?
Members, I ask for you to adjourn in Estelle Getty's honor. A great actress who played Sophia on the Golden Girls, lived a wonderful life, was a great actress in New York, and in Los Angeles in that famous Emmy Award-winning role. Also, members, I'd like you to adjourn in memory of Lotta Ryan, who was my brother Bobby's wife. She succumbed to cancer. She was a film producer, Jurassic Park, rent many other movies. She was a wonderful, inspiring sister-in-law, who loved my brother Bobby, and she had a big, bad, year-and-a-half battle with cancer, and she survived by her son Sean and my brother Bobby. Her dad Phil, you know, who was a great stillman photographer who was down here, we honored, she also survived, and two brothers as well. Lotta Ryan, a great woman, a great person.
All members, thank you. Mr. Zine?
Thank you. This was requested by the mayor's office on this adjourning motion, passed away on July twenty-first. Yagishapet Bogyamyan Ibrahnozian, born nineteen fifteen, passed away July twenty-first. Born in a small village in Iran, well-known for her independence and her strength, lost her mother at age two, and grew up in poverty, yet she always provided for others as often as she could throughout her life. Displayed her fierce independence while a teenager, being the first from her village to refuse to take part in an arranged marriage. She insisted, and instead married a man she loved. They were forced out of their village and settled in Tehran, where she soon became mother of seven children. Devoted mother and wife, worked fifteen hours a day washing clothes and doing other odd jobs for local families. She dedicated her life to her children, and did all she could to ensure their success in life. Her children eventually immigrated to the United States, wish she would join them some ten years later. A beloved wife, mother, grandmother, and great-grandmother, leaves behind seven children, sixteen grandchildren, thirteen great-grandchildren. One of her grandsons is Aran Ibrahnozian, a longtime staff member to Mayor Antonio Viegosa, and good friend to many throughout the city of Los Angeles, and may she rest in peace.
Thank you, and I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Robert Roy Red Jorgensen, who is the father-in-law of Jody Ochsimer, those of us that know Jody and the CAO's office. Passed away on July seventeenth, two thousand and eight, was born January thirty-first, nineteen twenty-seven. He was born in Groton, Massachusetts, to a printing teacher and a homemaker. Red Jorgensen grew up in Massachusetts and Maine. He attended Groton High School and enlisted in the Navy in World War II. After being honorably discharged from the Navy in nineteen forty-six, he attended and graduated from Bodoine College in Brunswick, Maine. He also graduated from Harvard Business School, after which he became an executive with the international paper company, manufacturing company, Crown Zellerback. During his illustrious career at Crown Zellerback, he worked in many locations around the U.S. and the world, including five years in Holland with his young family overseeing a joint venture between a Dutch plastics company and Crown Zellerback. He eventually settled in Southern California, where he started Robert Jorgensen Associates Incorporated, an executive search firm. In his retirement years, he volunteered at the L.A. Mission downtown Los Angeles, helping the homeless in our community. He is survived by his wife Jean, his children Mike, Pat, and Nancy, his daughters' laws, Susan and Jody, and his four grandchildren, Chase, Dustin, Julianne, and Robert Jorgensen. May he rest in peace. Thank you. I know we have one announcement before we adjourn.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I think it's important that I make this announcement. Many of Angelenos have been hurt by the fact that people are going around stealing copper. They're actually stealing copper in some of our street pole lights and things of that nature. They might get a few hundred bucks for copper on a night's work, and cost the city taxpayers tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars. But I just wanted to announce that two men were arrested for trying to steal copper wiring from a Department of Water and Power, according to the Daily News. This happened at 1:00 a.m. this Monday. So I think it's important for people to realize, good law-abiding citizens, that we are on it, we look forward to them tipping us off when they see somebody doing this, and secondly, you will be in custody when we catch you, and we're gonna go all out to make sure that we make an example of the people who are doing this. This is wrong, and I just wanted to make sure that, according to the Daily News, this occurred at 1:00 a.m., where two people were arrested for trying to steal copper. Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Six, nine, one. Senator Colorado's bill has passed both houses, awaits the governor's desk, that focuses on this issue greatly, so.
Mr. Alacon, an announcement?
I just wanted to add on to what Mr. Carleton has said, and that my wife's brother is a plumber, and he actually had a job where he had to restore all the copper from underneath a house, where they had actually taken all the copper out from underneath a house. And secondly, the old, the El Cubano Market, I believe is in Tony's district, one of my staffers was driving by, and there were people on top of the roof, and they were stealing the copper from the roof, and manifestors from my staff reported that to the police, and they arrested the people on the spot. But I think it is important for us to make our communities more aware of what is going on with regard to the theft of copper.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. The meeting is adjourned.